I'm calling the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to extend an invitation for any citizen who would like to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Do we have anyone who would like to put something on the agenda this morning? If not, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or subtractions from the agenda?
I just have one thing to note. Item K is the approval of the letter of engagement with legislative audit. Jeff Schaefer is going to be coming up here 9:30-ish, Vicky thinks, but we have, I didn't have him specifically scheduled. We have a series of some public hearings in there, and if it's okay with the board, we will just fit him in when he gets here sometime in that timeframe. When he gets here, we'll just kind of move item K into wherever we are on the agenda at that point.
That sounds good, and if you could just let us know when, when he gets here. That would be great. Would we have any other changes to the agenda? Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda. On the consent agenda today, we have approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular allowances, approval of the human services report. Does anyone want to add or delete anything from the consent agenda?
I have one change. I handed out a different cellular authorization form. This will replace the one that was in your packet for Brian Gustad, our new highway superintendent that started yesterday. Just a change in amount. When it was originally submitted, the data plan was left off, so that's all I have.
We'll add that to the consent agenda then. Would we have any other changes to the consent agenda? Would we have a motion to approve?
So move.
And we'll do a roll call vote.
Johnson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Department head reports. Misty, shall we start with you?
You get shocked?
I did. Good morning. I think I'm awake now. I just have one thing to report to you. I have some others, but we'll deal with that at our next meeting. January 24th, 2019, we, Gary Eggerberg, Mike Andreessen, Mitch Lang, and myself will be attending recertification classes for our commercial spray license at, at the Days Inn here in Brookings, and that'll be an all-day class. Just wanted to report that to you, otherwise I don't have anything unless you've got questions for myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike? Kristen?
Good morning. So I passed out a overview that I've been compiling since December 6th. Just a couple pieces of kind of raw data. As we end the year, I'll have a complete report on the, meeting on the 27th. A couple of the things that we do have, as of 12/26, we had 223 members showing in the database. One of the nice pieces from that is since then, we've added roughly, I'm gonna say 17 members. Oh, that's really cool, Sean.
That's me.
Oh. Sorry, I didn't know we could do that. That's really neat. So with the membership sale that we do have going on for full facility, now through the end of the year, we've been adding members steadily. We had almost a $2,000 day on Sunday with just memberships. So, and we do have our free-range Sunday coming up, the last Sunday of the month, which is the 30th. So I do expect kind of another really good day there. If trends continue, our revenue at the end of the year should break 100,000 for the year, which to me, I'm pretty excited about that. I don't know how you guys feel, but that's like a two thumbs up day for me. You'll see some membership data here that doesn't coincide with the member numbers. So out of our POS system, we have 174 archery memberships that were sold, 125 gun memberships that were sold. Those do include our three-month memberships. A lot of that, and I'm working on a conversion ratio, then turned around either A, didn't convert to regular memberships, or B, did convert into year memberships after that. So all of those numbers do take into consideration that three-month membership in which we sold an extreme amount of those three months. People mainly gearing up for hunting season, they came in, they bought that three-month membership to, you know, or to re-experience the BCOAC, you know, after kind of the, the change over to the county. So with that, we are sitting as of 12/6 at 223. The, the best fact that I wanted to give you is as of 12/6, we had sold 3,234 day passes to the facility. So that shows that we have a lot of people coming out. The other thing is the gun rentals. We had rented out the various guns that we have available, and this is taking into consideration, all of them, over 211 times for all guns available. So it shows that the, the weapons that we do have available are being utilized, and then I'll have numbers for the ammunition and everything else at the meeting on the 27th. Any questions as we go into later parts of the meeting?
This is a great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Kristen. Richard.
Good morning. I believe you got Mr. Hill's report previously, so I won't reiterate that. Things are going smoothly in the office. It's kind of a nice slowdown to get kind of caught up on things. Our January meeting will be January 8th, the second Tuesday, being the first Tuesday is on, on New Year's Day, and we will, we will be meeting in the community room, so. And that's all that I have.
And I know, Stacy, you have this on your report, but while Richard's here, what's going on with getting those televised starting at the beginning of the year?
I think Sean's been working with the planning and zoning office, getting all of the, kind of the technical items in place, people's names, titles, things like that. I think we'll be ready to roll that out. The only question that we, that remained, as I had mentioned at the last meeting, was a rebroadcast schedule. How often do you want those meetings rebroadcast? The commission is done a couple of different times, like on a Wednesday evening and a Saturday, until there is a new meeting that replaces it. So we would need to look at what we, what our expectations would be for the planning and zoning meetings.
And did you tell us, do we, are, do we pay extra for those rebroadcasts?
I don't believe so, no.
Any other questions for Richard? Thank you. Chris?
Nope, I don't have much.
Vicky?
Good morning. We had our tax certificate auction yesterday. We had six investors come, and there was 100 properties that the taxes were purchased and a certificate was given, and about $227,000 worth of property taxes. So it was a success, and Lori in our office has been busy getting all the certificates and all the bookwork with that taken care of, so that went, went well. And just to give you a note, we received a note from Anna over at Clerk of Courts that our court-appointed attorney fees are going to increase in January. It's just going from $94 to $95 an hour, so not much of an increase, but still an increase. And you received in your packet the finance officer's report for the month, and the be it noted items are the auditor's account with the treasurer, the payroll and additives totals, the highway expenditure report, and the register of deeds statement of fees. And also there, in the report, is the cat, general fund surplus analysis, and we were at 46%. And that was higher than last year, but I don't know, pretty much in tune with some of the years, so we will be, Stacy and I will be meeting and giving you some scenarios on how to get that below the 40%. But right now, we are above, and we will have to be taking action to get that below the 46%. And other than that, it's just business as usual, getting, still waiting for the state to get back to us so we can send out tax notices there. They have a new person out there, so it's kind of been a long process this year, so still waiting to do that. Any questions?
It sounded like there was an increase in the number of tax deeds sold, is that?
It was really, it was about the same. We had more investors here, but still about the number of properties was within five of what it was last year, and the dollar amount too. We had about 222,000 last year and about 227,000 this year, so really, it's, it's pretty much on schedule.
Any other questions for Vicky?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff?
Good morning. I don't have a lot this morning either, just, just as I've given you to report, we have 27 inmates, which, like I always said before, if we can stay under 30, we're doing pretty good. 24/7 seems, continues to stay busy. I have 50 people that come in twice a day to blow. I have 77 on the 24/7 program that come in, do a UA test every week. Then there's about 28 others from other programs that come in, so it still keeps us busy in the 24/7 area. The only other thing that I, one to mention is, is cellphone allowances, that I'm looking into maybe going with AT&amp;T, and, and then the county buys the cellphones. And what I'm wondering is, do I need to come before you to make a presentation? I can, if I go with AT&amp;T, which has priority, and so, let's just say for HOBO Day. HOBO Day is a problem for our laptops in our cars and for cellphone usage because it's so high. With AT&amp;T FirstNet, then I'm guaranteed that I have open lines. So if we have an emergency, I have our Cads in our cars work, and, and, and our cellphones work because they give us priority, and that's what they do, AT&amp;T does. And they're $39 a month per phone with unlimited data and all that, then they're also push-to-talk, so actually I can put a microphone on them, or not have a microphone on them, and I can use them as a digital radio also, but that's not to replace our digital radios. And if I went with, if I go with AT&amp;T, I can save, you know, I damn put a, it depends on how I'm going to work, because there's, I have a part-time deputy that I only give $15 allowance to, and then the coroner gets a $30 allowance. So to me, it wouldn't make sense for the county to give them a phone and pay $39, so there'd be probably, I, I have 18 phones that we pay self, sell in my department, and so there'd be some that I would probably just keep at that $15 or that $30 and not give them the priority. But I would save approximately, be about $300 a month if I go with AT&amp;T, yeah, what I'm paying now. I guess my question is, it's in my budget, do I need, need to come before you and, and present this, or can I just go ahead if?
Madam Chair, I think as long as it's in your budget, and it's not gonna cost you anymore, I mean, everybody decides what, what provider they're gonna go with. So, you know, if you're changing providers to this, and it's in your budget, I can't see why we would have to weigh in on this.
You mentioned purchasing the phones. Who, who would purchase the phones then?
We would purchase the phones. The phones are either 99 cents or free. They'll probably charge us 99 cents, but they're the new, it's the new phones. I mean, I tested a couple of them to make sure we got coverage. Verizon has a similar, you know, but it's, it's still not as, not as, I don't know how to explain it. Sean could probably explain it, because Sean went with me to, and Bob, Emergency Management wants to go with AT&amp;T too, but they're still a little bit better when it comes to this FirstNet, in other words, for the priority coverage. It's like when they had the Brookings School shut down because of, they had that threat, is that AT&amp;T called me, the, the representative called me and said that she'd bring phones over to me if we needed to have a high priority on our cellphones. The biggest thing is, is that they give us priority when the cellphones are the busiest. So on days, if we had, when we're working SDSU, and it's my understanding that SDSU Emergency Management is gonna go with AT&amp;T also, the fire department, I believe, I, I'm not sure what the police department's gonna do at, at this point, but other agencies around us are starting to go with this AT&amp;T. Lincoln County just went with them, and, and because of that priority, the biggest thing is the priority. When we can't get on our cellphone, they give us pri, they guarantee us priority that we will have cellphone coverage, and that our Cads in our car will have that capabilities, because I'll change, right now I have Verizon cards in my car, SIM cards in my cars, but I'm gonna switch over to E&amp;T, AT&amp;T, so that if I have an emergency, then I get on that priority in the cars too.
Have you been out, I mean, have you been in our difficult areas around White and Bruce, and AT&amp;T does have coverage there?
Yeah, seems to have coverage. I gave them to two deputies to go out and test, and.
That was my next question, too, is the coverage similar from Verizon to AT&amp;T, because that's where I've heard sometimes the difference is, especially for you having to cover.
And there's some problems with, it, it, you know, I'm not gonna say that AT&amp;T is perfect everywhere, but Verizon isn't perfect everywhere either. And I'm running Sprint, and I can't even, I can, in my barnyard, I, I see the tower, and I don't even, I have to run up to the house to answer my phone, so. And I have a booster in my house.
I guess one of the things I was going with of ownership of the phone, how, how are we, right now, we get an allowance for all, for the employees, and we purchase our own phones, our own plan. Have we purchased the phones for, for the sheriff's department in the past?
Yes. Yeah, we used to furnish, when I first, when I first became sheriff, we, we furnished phones for everyone, and then, then it was decided to, to, to do the allowance. Now, the, the problem, not the problem, but there is, it is for personally, you know.
How do you separate?
There, it's, it's the county's phone, so we regulate personal use on the phone. So there's, there's some, the city now allows personal use on their phones, but they have a policy, so one of, some of the other counties already got their policies in line for the personal use on their phones. I just assume that half, my deputies have to have two phones.
Right.
But there's a way to do it so that, that, that the county's gonna regulate the phone, so in other words, we can say what's gonna be on that phone too, if that makes sense.
Did you say you prefer that they do have two phones?
No, I don't want them to have to carry two phones.
And, and I disagree with Commissioner Miller. I'd, I'd like you to get all the information, come back to us, because you've heard me beat this drum before, I think we pay way too much on cellphone allowances, and maybe if, if the sheriff is exploring some options, maybe we should hear more about that to see if there might be some possibilities for some of the other expense that we have that, on our cellphone reimbursements. Did you say it's $39 a month?
Yeah, per phone, yes.
$39, and then you would expect that your people would carry that phone instead of their personal phone?
Right.
Is that what you're?
Right.
And it's unlimited data and unlimited usage?
Yes. And upgrades, they'll upgrade every, every time a new phone comes out, they'll, they can, they'll upgrade us for 99 cents.
So we won't have to pay that extra amount for the phones?
If you would like. I, I, and I don't have a problem having the rep come in either and visit with you, if you'd like to do that, because I'm in no hurry to switch. I'm just bringing it forward, unless you wanna ask Sean some questions. I hate to always put Sean under the bus, but he was with me, and he's the techie guy.
Right.
But I mean, Marty's department's different compared to our other departments. It's crucial that they have, I mean, they're providing that to a deputy, just like they're issuing them a weapon. I mean, it's a, it's a tool in their job.
And it's the priority that, that I like is, like on HOBO Day or SDSU, when we have, you know, 16,000 people up there at a ballgame, and everybody's using their phone, and if there's an emergency in town, then I get pri, my cellphones in my cars have priority. Well, we found out last HOBO Day, the highway patrol, for some reason, my laptops in the cars stayed active, but city police and the highway patrol was having some problems with their internet, and.
But we spend how much a month on cellphone reimbursements? Can you, do you have a?
I can't remember.
I mean, thousands of dollars. And if his one department is going to save $300 per month by looking at this type of plan, maybe we should look at doing something a little bit different county-wide.
Can I ask, Marty, with the FirstNet, where that is at this rate, is that available to your average county employer? Is this specific to law enforcement, emergency responders?
The FirstNet is specific to law enforcement.
So it's gonna be the same price?
Would it be a similar price?
There'd be a similar price, but you wouldn't have priority.
But like, like you explained, I think this has been proposed to some of the fire departments, that it'll take place of their pager and phone at the same time, where they can push and.
Yeah, push-to-talk and.
Yep, as a radio, or a phone, whatever.
Yep. But again, it's not to replace our portable digital radios, but they can be used as a digital radio.
Marty, my only concern would be that you have to start establishing some sort of a policy for personal use, for what you're gonna allow or not, because nowadays, when everybody's carrying a phone, it's their camera, it's their chat, that's everything else. If you're gonna restrict it, they're gonna wanna possibly carry their personal phone with them too, and now we're starting to talk about extra equipment that everybody has to carry and fumble with, and which one's ringing, which one do I call on, and so forth. So if you're gonna require them to only carry your phone, then that policy may be something you wanna discuss with your deputies and staff, whether they're comfortable with that, because I would imagine there's a few of them that would feel that it's kind of a restriction. But then again, some policy that you would establish that you could, you could bring back to us to show you, show us how you would do it. I don't want officers carrying two phones.
Sean, come on up and have a seat by him.
Sean always bails me out. Sorry to put you.
Our tech guru.
So, yeah, I went to the FirstNet presentation, I visited with Verizon about their alternative. The, the best part about FirstNet is that it's, it's a government initiative. They have the funding, AT&amp;T was low bidder, AT&amp;T is going to continue and has standards to meet. They, they have measurable deliverables that they have to get to. Verizon is doing the same thing, but they aren't required to continue receiving funding to do that. We have seen improved coverage of AT&amp;T in the area, and we, I've, I've given out a hotspot to the deputies to try out, and a lot of places where Verizon has less coverage, AT&amp;T has better, but conversely, Verizon has better coverage in some places where AT&amp;T doesn't. I, I think, coverage-wise, it's a wash. And a, as far as the pricing goes, the, the biggest, the, the law enforcement gets definitely a very good deal on the devices themselves. For other employees that wouldn't qualify for that, they don't get the same discount. They, they do get a, it is substantially cheaper, but it definitely isn't 99 cents. And then we run into an issue of how do we get an employee to pay for the device, or does the county, and is it then the county's device? I discussed it some with Stacy, and just looking at the various possibilities, it, it becomes a bit of an accounting headache dealing with some of that. I don't know if it's necessarily worth the money. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. That's not for me to, not for me to decide. But then we are also, in some cases, pulling employees out of their group plans, which can cost them discounts, and also mandating that they be on a particular network, which for some people, it doesn't matter, but if we were to, say, mandate that Marty be on Sprint, he has no coverage at his house without his booster. So, so there's some given, some take.
Would the cost of the plan, do you know, for other governmental employees be the $39 a month, setting aside the purchase of the phone part? Would the plan cost be $39?
The coverage cost, through all of the providers I've looked at, and I've, I, I haven't looked at them all by any means, Sprint is one I haven't looked at due to their kind of focus on the Brookings City area, but with AT&amp;T and Verizon, they both appear to be about $40.
For unlimited data and unlimited calls?
Yes.
So if that's $40 per month, whether it's Verizon or Sprint, I'm gonna ask this question to the commission again, why are we paying $105 allowance? And, and that, that's my concern. I don't have any problem with the sheriff's office doing what, what the sheriff is talking about, but when we have an option, and, and, and we're paying thousands and thousands of dollars every month, over and above what it's costing our employees, I don't know why we're doing that, but maybe we could do a little bit more research on it. You have the cost of the phone above that. You're not gonna get a 99 cent phone. I, I do understand that. Okay, but what I'm talking about is, is maybe having an option for people, I'm gonna use myself as an example. I get that $75 a month allowance. I know that it does not cost me $75 a month, you guys have heard me say that before, for my data plan and my phone usage. I'm getting paid more by the county than what I'm actually paying Verizon is what I'm on, or what we're paying. It's, it's, it's not a good use of taxpayer dollars, and I think this might be a good time, again, for us to look at that option, but we don't have to, we got a big agenda today, and maybe we could have a report back on that if you guys would like.
Right, and I think one of the things for me that concern is us buying the phone for them, and I understand, you know, you're a different department than all of our departments and stuff like that, so I'm not sure we should jump in with your, your system or anything like that. I appreciate you bringing it up, but the one concern I do have is us buying phones and that, you know, having emails, their email address on their access to that and their data. There's a fine line there of what's personal, what isn't, and I'm concerned about what that can lead to down the road, because even if you, seems like you're gonna mandate that they have this, and they're gonna check their own email address on their other phone, they're gonna have both phones with them every time. It's just, seems like that's gonna be a, an issue, so I think, you know, I'd like to discuss it with you on that part there, and then we can look at some of our stuff down the road here on our stuff with that, but I appreciate you bringing it up, because I, I wanna make sure that there's not some liability issues if something happens with a deputy that, and the phone gets taken, whose phone were they using, different things like that, so.
And I don't have a problem with that, and I didn't mean to start this for the whole county, I just was worried about my department and, and the priority stuff. I can, I'll come back with you with the policies that other departments are using. They are allowing their employees to use their phone for personal use, but it is some restrictions.
You'll bring back some samples on all that personal use?
Sure.
Thank you both. We have.
Because even if you, seems like you're gonna mandate that they have this, and they're gonna check their own email address on their other phone, they're gonna have both phones with them every time. It's just, seems like that's gonna be a, an issue, so I think, you know, I'd like to discuss it with you on that part there. And then we can look at some of our stuff down the road here on our stuff with that, but I appreciate you bringing it up. Because I, I wanna make sure that there's not some liability issues. If something happens with a deputy that, and the phone gets taken, whose phone were they using, different things like that, so.
And I don't have a problem with that, and I didn't mean to start this for the whole county, I just was worried about my department and the, and the priority stuff. I can, I'll come back with you with the policies that other departments are using. They are allowing their employees to use their phone for personal use, but it is some restrictions.
You'll bring back some samples on all that personal use?
Sure.
Thank you both. We have a regularly scheduled nine o'clock presentation by Banner Associates. And if you wanna come on up, it's nine o'clock. Thank you Doug, and if you'd just go ahead and introduce yourself for viewing public?
Yeah, good morning, my name is Doug Wessel with Banner Associates.
Thank you.
What I wanna do is I wanna give you guys kind of a status report of all your current bridge projects going on. And basically what I do is if, as I'm going through this, if you guys have any questions at all, just do not hesitate to interrupt me so we can answer those questions. So first of all, we'll talk about the, the big grants that you guys were awarded in two thousand seventeen and the status of those. First of all, we had three overlay projects. The first one was structure number oh six one fifty-two nineteen, which is on Highway nineteen. Structure number oh six one seventy-six oh fifty, which is on Highway thirty-eight. And oh six two twenty-one ninety, which was on Highway twenty-three. All those projects, those overlay projects was bid on June twelfth of two thousand eighteen. And it was a, we, the award was a combination of the bids. The low bid was actually two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Our estimates for the bridge grant amount was a little more than three hundred and eighty-nine. So we came in lower than that. Those projects are scheduled to be done this summer and it has a final completion date of July fifteenth of nineteen. Okay, the next one that was also awarded in the two thousand seventeen grant awards was structure number oh six one sixty-nine two thirty-nine. That is the South Bridge on seventy-seven, right on the county line. That is a three-span continuous concrete bridge. That project was bid on November seventh in combination with oh six one sixty-nine two thirty-eight. And if you guys remembered that, we kinda delayed this one, moved two thirty-eight up to get them together. That was, that was on an eighty-twenty financial split. So what I'll do then, I'll go ahead and sense those combinations, I'll skip, not skip, but I'll move to the two thousand eighteen Bridge Grants Awards and particularly talk about the one sixty-nine two thirty-eight. That one is a four-span pre-stressed girder bridge on seventy-seven. That contract was actually awarded to Prom Construction. The low bid, combined low bid total was three point oh six million dollars. Our combined engineer, engineer estimate for grants was three point four million. So once again, we were, we were a little bit less than that. For, now that is on, that, that part of it is on a fifty-fifty split. Okay, the status of those demolition is scheduled to begin on that, on those structures in February, with an overall completion date of November one, two thousand nineteen. That particular construction is being administered by the South Dakota DOT. So as they need assistance, if they need assistance, I'm sure they'll be contacting the Highway Department for whatever thing they need. Okay? Moving on, the other item also in our two thousand eighteen big grant was structure number oh six one forty-seven two hundred. That is a three-span pre-stressed girder bridge on County Highway twelve. That was also on a fifty-fifty split. The schedule for that one, our preliminary plans for review are due September first of nineteen to the DOT. The scheduled bid date is in late two thousand nineteen with the construction in two thousand twenty. Just so you know, the, the total estimate for that, for our grant was a little over one point six million.
Would you say the, the, the plans are due when?
September first of nineteen. And then that, that's when the DOT review starts.
Which bridge is that again?
That's the one on Highway.
That is our Sinai Bridge?
Yep.
So we're not looking at completion till two thousand twenty?
Yep, two thousand twenty. Okay, so moving on, we'll talk about the first round of the two thousand nineteen big grant awards, which was awarded in August. We got a preliminary engineering grant for structure oh six one fifty-three two hundred, that was on an eighty-twenty split. And the hydraulics and type size and location information, submittal back to the DOT is due May thirty-first of nineteen. For that one, our grant total, or the, the, the total project amount for the grant was forty-four thousand five hundred. Okay? So that covers the current big grant projects you have going on, okay?
And I'm sorry to ask again, I, I'm trying to keep track, so later we're gonna talk about how much money we need to be setting aside for each project. The Sinai Bridge, Highway twelve?
Yep.
Could you tell me the cost on that, do we know?
Well, the estimated cost on that one was one point six three million. And that was a fifty-fifty, now that one has not been bid yet, but that is where we're sitting on that.
Thank you.
Okay? Yeah, it's like I said, so you guys have done very well in the big grant program. So moving on, let's go to the projects that you currently have going on that you guys are self-funding, paying a hundred percent of them. First of all, you have two pre-cast box culverts, structure number oh six oh fifty-two twenty dash U and oh six one hundred dash oh seven dash U. Both of those are short-span bridges. The pre-cast sections have already been made, cause it was originally supposed to be installed this fall. As you remember, we had quite a wet fall. The Holloway Construction is the one that has been hired to come in and install those. Just due to the wetness, not only in Brookings County, but off this whole area. It was decided best to wait, not to tear into this wet stuff and have a chan, have a potential chance of not getting this done before winter sets in, well, you know, come to find out, we've had a pretty nice winter. But right now, his schedule is to come in, in June or July of nineteen to replace both of those. Like I said, the pre-cast sections have already been cast and they're sitting in the yard down in Mitchell. So once he decides to go, all I have to do is get them on trucks and get them up here. Those ones, we, we pay them by the hour. And so I, I guess I'd have to look at back, what do we normally pay them, I'd have to think, is it a, I guess I don't, I'm not sure what the total price comes in for those.
Weren't those something around that seventy-five to a hundred thousand number?
Yeah.
Cause I was thinking we added a couple of those on there around that price tag that we spent an extra couple hundred thousand towards it.
Yeah, that would've been on your last year's budget, cause it should've been, that should've been built there.
Right.
But.
I think that's kind of the number we're, we're at, but not for sure on it.
And that was per unit, right? Times two.
Yep. Okay, the next one that you guys are, you're funding is structure number oh six two eighty-one sixteen. That is a sixty-five foot pre-cast channel bridge on County Highway twenty-seven. That's up to base and electric. That one, we are currently in the design phase, we will bid that in March of nineteen and the construction will occur in nineteen. For that one, we have an estimated construction cost of six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Okay? So that concludes your current active projects. Does anybody have any questions on that before I kinda move on?
Right, Brian gonna stick around after hearing that?
I'm, I'm gonna be meeting with Brian later on this week to kinda give him even a more detailed summary of everything, to get him, try to get him up to speed.
Are you gonna stay or are you taking off?
Oh.
Yeah.
Doug, did that include the one north of Bruce we're gonna talk about later here?
Nope, that's coming up, that's coming up here. Okay, so basically we'll go on to what, what we have coming down the pipeline, so to speak, the next ones that we have planned.
I am sorry, I'm gonna interrupt one more time, that six hundred and sixty thousand for County Highway twenty-seven bridge is, are we paying a hundred percent of that?
A hundred percent of that one.
A hundred percent, thank you.
Yep.
And that's not part of the program?
No, that's not part of the program, basically.
So what we should look at doing when we're separating funds out in the Highway Department, we should look at maybe big match funds.
Yep.
And then also if we're gonna, if we have funds that we need to pull out for our own projects or so, so.
Yep. Okay? Okay, so, so moving on, I guess we have another big grant submittal date coming up on January second. As we were talking about, we are gonna be submitting a preservation grant application for a structure on County Highway number six. Structure number oh six one twelve oh eighty. We already did submit a pre-application to, to the state in August and it was approved by the DOT, so yes, this is a good project. You guys have already approved the submission resolution in your November twentieth meeting. Basically, this project is gonna consist of a concrete deck overlay, it's, we're gonna remove the joints on the end of the structure. We're gonna replace portion of the back walls. We're gonna install a new three-beam rub rail over the, over the, for the, for the railings. And we're also gonna install new guard rails off the end of the structure. That one, there's a project cost, total project cost estimate for that submittal will be a little over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That'll be on an eighty-twenty split. Just so you know, you know, typically the way they, the DOT allocates their money for the big grants, they go ahead and preservation grants first. So there's really no reason to go above eighty-twenty. And also just if you're curious, your, your calculated preservation score on this one, bridge will be seventy-one. Last year, there was nine preservation awarded, the high was sixty point two and the low was thirty-four point three. Now again, as you heard me say, no guarantee what's this year, but that's what you're looking at. So there's really no reason to go past eight, eighty-twenty.
Do we have enough money in our four million cap?
I'll get to that, I'll get to that. Okay? The next one that we are working on for, it's actually gonna be the two thousand twenty big grant awards, is structure number oh six one twenty oh fifty-three. That'll be a, that is actually the longest bridge in the county. That one's just north of Bruce, that'll be a two hundred and eighty-seven foot four-span pre-stressed girder bridge, again on Highway seven. What we're doing is we're kinda following the formula to get this awarded as we did for one sixty-nine two thirty-eight. We will be going for bid ready to get our additional ten points. I believe our contract or letter agreement is coming up later in your agenda for approval to, for us to do that. Basically, we haven't, we haven't come down to a line-by-line item quantity, but the rough estimate for that bridge is gonna be two point five million dollars. Cause it's a big bridge. So what I will do is kinda what we did before, is this time next year, when we get ready to submit that application, at that time, you, you know, you will, I'll be able to calculate your, what points, where we're sitting. This next year, and we'll be able to look back at what points it took last year, it's gonna be interesting because in this two thousand nineteen grant application, grant approval process, will be the first year they have the full fifteen million in their account. Before they only had nine. So that's another six million dollars in, in the kitty, so to speak. So it's gonna be really interesting to see how deep they go into the points. And we'll at least be able to look at that to have, so you guys can make a decision to, do we wanna kick in more money? Do we want, you know, where do we wanna come in at? So that kind of, like I said, that one's gonna be, that's in the planning stage and we're targeting that one for two thousand twenty, big grant. Okay? So now we'll come back to your money, Brian. Okay, going into this two thousand nineteen grant applications, you had available a little more than, well, actually you had seven hundred and eleven thousand three hundred dollars is what you had available, okay? We already used a grant for the preliminary engineering on one fifty-three of thirty-five thousand six hundred. Okay, so that come out of your grant. And now we're gonna go for this preservation grant, which out of the grant money, that eighty percent match is basically four hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars looking back. So of that seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars, you were taking four, four seventy-nine out of it, okay? So that money, I guess wherever that math is, little less, little, what, two thirty will roll down. But then coming from two thousand sixteen, we've got, no, excuse me, two thousand seventeen, we've got one point four million trick coming back, okay? So going into two thousand twenty, we will have an available funds of one point six seven million dollars. Now, if you go ahead, if we're looking at a two point five million dollar bridge, if you go eighty, eighty percent match, that's two million. So we are a little short there, so probably looks like already, to get that to fit in there, we're gonna be looking at a little more than a twenty percent split, if you wanna keep that going.
And then to work off that to two thousand eighteen though, we were awarded quite a bit there, so we should have quite a bit more rolling back in again?
Two thousand twenty-one, yeah, then you'll get the one point eight five million coming in. Yep, so it's just kind of, like I said, it's the, it's the downside of being successful, when you're, you're, you're pushing that limit.
Okay. We're getting the most, the worst bridges done.
You bet.
Taking advantage of them.
Yep. Yep, you're utilizing that money very well. So, so that is kinda what our, what the direction we're going up to two thousand twenty big grant, okay? After that, we, I need to sit down with, you know, we need to have a planning session with you guys and Brian, once Brian gets up to speed. Where do we wanna, I hate to say target, but where do you wanna target in two thousand twenty-one? And maybe, you know, and then we'll start moving, looking at that, I mean, what's the priority? You know, I know this, the bridge north of Bruce was identified as a priority a couple of years ago and we said, okay, we're moving towards this and this is where we wanna go. And this is our plan, how to implement it, to get it going. So, but no, like you said, you know, you, it's easy to say, oh yeah, we're doing good, but you always gotta keep planning.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna lean on you on recommendation from your bridge inspections and that's basically what we're taking our information off.
Yep.
And obviously, we're gonna weigh the needs of where they're at and lifespan of those and, and the funds that we have available and what we wanna put those to. So, I mean, you're, the short ones and the long ones and stuff like that are gonna, we're gonna see what, how bad they are and you're gonna let us know that, I guess.
Yep, and like I said, it's, it's all balancing act of, you know, need versus want versus, you know, it's all, it's all balancing act and now funds and.
Yep.
I have two questions, but does anybody else have a question you wanna ask first? I'm sure I know the answer to this, but I wanna ask it anyway. There is no way to expedite the Sinai Bridge, that's so harmful to our producers that are in that part of the county.
Well, what I can tell you is, you know, if you remember correctly, on that bridge, you guys a hundred percent paid for the preliminary engineering, the hydraulics. You cut off a year right there. Now, once, now we're into the DOT system, we're in their system.
And it, it won't be as crucial when seventy-seven, when those two bridges get done, that will alleviate some of the crunch, they can go around. I know that's not the ideal thing, but that will help.
But we have to remember, we did do the bridge on County Road sixteen also, that, that is, they could use that now too, so.
Yep, I got, we replaced the, the superstructure on that, and that's, so that's a legal loaded route that, that way.
And then my next question is, and I know that in November of nineteen, we're gonna get your short structure report again, if I recall that correct. But from the last short structure report, we're- But from the last short structure report, we, we didn't get those two done this year, um, because of the weather. So next year, are we, will we just be looking at those two, or are we going to be looking at doing those two plus whatever we would have had scheduled for nineteen? Does everybody understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, and what, you know, what we, what we found is when we first started doing that, and I don't know if it's six, eight years ago, we first started doing that. We found some short span structures that were, that needed replacement. And we've kicked out probably eight, eight of them, you know, in, you know, a couple, two, three a year. Well, we're down to the ones now, it's not so much a safety issue, you know, maybe they're, oh yeah, maybe the, the, this should be a little longer stuff. And if you remember correctly this, we, we actually took that money that you guys have been allocating to that, and we put it towards the bridge up by Basin Electric this next year. Okay? Now, once again, that'll be another decision we, we make for twenty twenty. Do you want to go and add another bridge a hundred percent in funds, you know, sixty, fifty footer? Or do you want to go back and is there, is the, has the priority come up on the short span? And then once again, that's what we have to talk about, and you, it's just a matter of prioritizing.
So these two that we didn't get done this year that we're going to do next year, when those two are done, are we pretty much caught up with, with, uh, short structure report that you gave us in two thousand seventeen?
I would say yes, you know, but now is there still a need there? Of course there's still a need there. It's just this Basin Electric Bridge came up as a higher priority to divert your funds there. Now again, once we look and plan for twenty twenty, we'll have to see where we're at at that time.
Anybody else have any questions for Doug? Brian, did you want to ask any questions? You, you are welcome to do that.
I'm gonna meet with Doug later.
Yep.
Alrighty.
I think that might be best.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you.
We appreciate all your help.
Oh, yeah.
And I think before our nine thirty scheduled item, Brian, if you want to come on up. Your second day on the job, we put you on the spot.
Yes. Good morning.
Morning.
And, and for our, um, listening public who haven't met you yet, would you like to just maybe say your name while you're on TV?
Brian Gustad, uh, started yesterday, so I was hoping Dick could be here to, uh, help me answer some of these questions, so I hope I can muddle through it.
And I don't know that we necessarily, anybody have any questions for Brian? We just want to welcome you to the county and tell you that we're looking forward to working with you and.
And the feeling is likewise, so.
Don't panic, it'll all come.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Did, did Dick clean the truck up for you, so?
Yeah, I got a, I got a little bit of cleaning to do there.
So did you have anything you wanted to say to us today?
Well, there was one thing that Dick had asked me to do, um, is the structures here, uh, south on seventy seven, the oh six, one sixty nine, two thirty eight, and, uh, and the two thirty nine. The, uh, in the bidding documents, uh, the start date, uh, was March first, and by resolution, uh, Dick had asked if I had, would ask the board if they could move that start date up to February four. And the only reason they want to do that is because of the winter we're having.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't?
I couldn't see why we wouldn't go, get them going a little sooner and get them open earlier.
I know they won't avoid the water if we happen to get a snowfall and a flood, they'd like to get the piers in before the water comes, so.
Is there anything going on with alternate route, uh, route for the public that would make a difference in moving the start date?
Dick didn't feel that way. He thought, uh, getting them out there sooner, like Larry had mentioned with the water, would probably be most advantageous to everybody.
Do we need to do anything official?
I believe the.
Take action by the board?
The DOT is gonna need a, uh, a motion, but I don't know if that can be taken care of at the next meeting when it's on the agenda.
We could probably put that on the twenty seventh meeting here next Thursday. Is there any specific documentation that they need, or it just?
I will find out.
Okay.
And make sure.
Yeah, let's just visit about that, but I'll make a note of it.
Anything else?
Uh, that's all I have.
All right, well, thank you.
I'm excited to get going, so.
Good, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We have all of our department heads. Moving on to regular business. And I'm going to skip item number A. We have five minutes before our next regularly scheduled item, and I think we might need a little more time on our contingency resolution than, than what we've got there. So let's move on to regular business, item number B, action to approve resolution eighteen dash fifty three. A plat of lots two, three, and four of Vanderwall Edition in the north one half of section three, township one eleven north, range fifty west of the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Richard, did you want to say anything regarding this?
Yes, good morning. This was approved by the zoning board, and the reason for the plating is part of the farm ground is pasture, part is farm ground, and family members are buying each one. And the only way to really describe it would be was to plat it versus a footage description, so.
And that passed unanimously yet?
Yes, at the planning and zoning meeting on December fourth.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is an item tabled from the November twentieth, two thousand eighteen meeting, which was an action to approve agreement eighteen dash one oh three. A State of South Dakota consultant contract for provision of community health services between Brookings County and the South Dakota Department of Health, Family and Community Health, Child and Family Services.
Move approval.
Second.
Actually, we need a motion to remove it from the table.
Table first. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
And I believe there was a motion to approve back a month ago, so we wouldn't need an additional motion to approve this. Michael and I were tasked with reaching out to our, our insurance company, and then Michael is going to take a look at the contract as well.
And what would you like to tell us, Michael?
Um, well, first of all, um, I just wanted to make a record that I did review the contract. Uh, the good news is that eighty percent of it has boilerplate language. Um, the bad news is when you have so much boilerplate language, a lot of it comes over that doesn't necessarily apply. Uh, that doesn't, um, uh, make the contract any worse, but it just begs the question to, uh, clarify some of the things that are in it for those who are going to have to be bound to it. Um, I did take note of Lynn Bren's comments, and, uh, I do believe that she's right in a number of the places that she voiced some concerns. Uh, first of all, uh, within the contract, it does start off with the county being a party and the state being a party. But somewhere in the, uh, boilerplate language that was borrowed from other contracts, uh, the county is named as consultant. So I do think that, uh, where it should say consultant, it should say county, because the county is the, uh, buyer, for lack of a, a, returns of the services that are going to be the proprietary in this contract. Under title E, when you get to the, uh, other provisions under section three, that's another example of some of the boilerplate language that's borrowed. Uh, I would say that eighty percent of the, uh, federal law that, uh, is noted here will apply to this contract. But the lobbying activity of specifically the anti-lobbing amendment, uh, probably won't have much to do with that. But again, this is an example of language that's borrowed from one contract and put into another, because a large majority of the law that's involved will apply to this contract. Lynn did express some concern about the other provisions under this contract, specifically all the expectations that are going to be set under federal law for the, uh, collection of personal health information, the preservation of electronic personal health information, and, um, compliance to HIPAA and the High Tech Act. Uh, I didn't find any glaring issues regarding the language of that, because it just sets forth the basic expectations for how information is going to be preserved. But I do have a little bit of a concern about the training that's involved, uh, for the people who are going to be adhering to this contract. Of course, that language doesn't have to be in there, but if there's any questions about what training is going to be necessary and what records are going to be required in order to comply with these, uh, I would invite those people to contact the state's attorney's office. Uh, last but not least, uh, Lynn raised an issue about venue, and just a basic, um, treatment of how venue is for the non-lawyers in the room. Uh, venue is basically place where the seller is providing services. In this contract, the seller is essentially the state of South Dakota, so venue is going to be in Hughes County, which is in Pier. Um, but at, at, if there's any argument, um, Brookings can be the venue. This part of the contract is just more like a fail-safe in, in the event there's a dispute over venue, uh, if there's litigation under this contract. So that's a very long-winded lawyerly way of saying this contract is okay, uh, absent some cosmetic changes.
Were the cosmetic changes made? I, 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 did the word consultant, I didn't see it in there anymore. It looked like maybe some of that got fixed, but no?
No.
Okay. So we're not ready to vote on this yet then, is that what you're telling us?
That's correct.
And what I didn't hear, I had a question about the, how the liability stuff was, and, and the email from Lynn Bren, I don't think got circulated to the commission, but, um, do we want to put this back on the table and, and ask that the state's attorney's office come back with a final document for us to approve?
Just have a question on whether or not timing is, plays a role here. Michael, is this a contract that basically every county is signing right now?
I'm sorry?
Every county has signed this contract that provides these services already and sent them to the state?
That's my understanding.
The deadline is January first. Are we, we're bumping up against a, a deadline. If we make those cosmetic changes, we have to then submit that to Pier for their approval. And then we have a one-of-a-kind contract versus the boilerplates, so to speak, for all the other counties.
Yes, we would have a one-of-a-kind contract.
All right, what are the chances that would happen before our other contract is up December thirty first, and this next one starts on January first? Does it have any consequences whatsoever?
It won't get approved at the state level and back to us for approval on the twenty seventh of December.
And then what are the consequences of us having a contract that's no longer valid because it expired? And waiting for this boilerplate, one of our own with cosmetic changes to become effective? Are we gonna lose some contract services in the meantime if it takes thirty to sixty days for some reason?
That I do not know. And the reason behind that is because the way this business has run beforehand, before this contract got on my desk, I don't know the pattern or practice between the parties and whether payment is going to be necessary to have this contract updated.
This contract has been approved annually since I've, since I can remember. The way, we made some changes with some personnel information on it, but.
I'd just like to say, it's not cosmetic changes. I, and I don't, if, if Commissioner Bartley's suggesting we approve it, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. My concern with this contract is how the liability portion is written, which makes us liable for acts that are partially committed by a county employee and a state employee. We assume liability for anything that is not solely committed by a state employee, and that could get us in trouble sometime. And I don't think every county has that provision in their agreement. But if what Commissioner Bartley is suggesting is maybe we approve this agreement for this year and ask Stacy maybe to collect some of those agreements from every other county, because I don't think the same agreement is in every county. And let's take a look at what everybody's doing and do it at the, more at the beginning of the year, so we're ready at next year to look at these problems and have it fixed. It's that liability provision that's in there that, that is of concern to me.
And I agree with Commissioner Pierce, uh, when we talk about the indemnification language. Um, I always think that it's beneficial to have a mutual indemnification clause where, and for lack of a better term, both parties agree to hold each other harmless, uh, rather than, um, each party. I think the language says that the county agrees to indemnify from the state for any acts.
It's all one-sided in this contract, and I think, and when we review those other contracts, we'll see some different language. Is that what, that what your preference is, that we approve this and then work on it for next year?
I think we need to. I think we need to get it done, and, and we've lived with this for a while, and I guess we are taking a risk, but I, I agree where you're coming from, and I appreciate your point in that, bringing it up. But I think time is of the essence on this one, and, uh, we need to get this one passed and fix it next year.
All right, we'll have a roll call vote.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and then we're moving on to a public hearing that we have scheduled today. Public hearing in action to approve the vacation of lot fourteen of the plat entitled lots one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen of DeBoer's Lake Titonka subdivision and government lots five and six in the southeast quarter of section seven township one eleven north, range fifty one west of the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Would we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Then I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have anyone here today to speak to this issue? Are you folks here for this matter? Did you want to say anything, or are you just standing by for questions? Pardon me? Okay, great. Is there anyone here in the audience that wishes to speak to this issue? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. And then Richard, would you just tell us a little bit about what's going on here?
Yes, this lot was platted with the, with the rest of the lots were plotted at that time, and they want to remove lot fourteen and place it back in the larger, larger, larger parcel that it came from, the parent parcel, and it would fall back and not be a lake park district lot. Would go back into a regular agricultural lot, so if at any time in the future they wanted to resell that or do, build a cabin on there, it would then have to be replatted to a new lot, lot fourteen A or whatever at that time. But right now it's taking it out of the small lot, we're putting it back into the parent parcel, um, for that.
So, so it, so then it would not be a buildable lot if you, we put it back into ag?
Correct, they could build a small storage shed on there or a grain bin, but not a residential structure.
Any other questions?
And, and right now it's separated out for tax purposes. I remember we had a evaluation discussion on this one, um, a while back, uh, what the, the actual value of this now. Now this will be valued at the ag.
Right, that would be a question to direct to, to Chris in the finance, the equalization office, but as far as this is what, this is what it pertains to as far as the zoning.
Okay.
That is correct. Once this is vacated, I will put, be putting this piece of land back in with the big parent parcel. Um, once, we've got a, we've got one more step to get to the big parcel, but it'd be valued at its soil rating. Um, basically, right, last year it was valued at four hundred, I took it to sixteen hundred, it was appealed, we lowered it back to four hundred. It's looking like now valued on the ag soils, it will be valued at about three hundred dollars, um, on the productivity system, so.
Any other questions? Thank you. Then we'll do a roll call vote.
Bartley?
Were you ready to vote? I didn't ask if the commissioners had any comments, I'm sorry.
We're ready.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Johnson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Now at 9:40, we have a public hearing in action to approve Resolution 18-50, a resolution authorizing the exchange of real estate.
So move.
Second.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone that is here to speak to this matter? There being no one, I will close the public hearing. And Stacy, would you like to say something about this?
Um, Deputy State's Attorney Steve Breitzman has been working on this. This is property in the north part of the county on some S-curves, at some right-of-way, uh, county highway right-of-way that we had that we will be basically giving, exchanging the real estate over to the Ebers family for their use.
Comments, questions from the commission?
Well, it's a piece of property that had been, been used by the family there that I think a while back we realized it was our property, and they, so we're kind of clearing it up here, and Steve's been working with them on a contract to get that transferred and compensation or whatever and stuff, so it's more cleaning up our, our property.
Any other comments? Ready to vote? We'll do a roll call vote.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D under regular business, action to approve Agreement 18-104, a fee agreement between Brookings County and Schaefer Law Office Professional LLC. Move approval.
Second.
Any comments or questions? We'll have a roll call vote.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action E.
Uh, Chair, Madam Chair, would you like to go back to item A so we don't miss that? Or are you...
We've got three minutes, and I thought we're gonna need...
We have eight minutes.
Well, eight minutes. I thought we might need a little more time if we're talking about those contingency amounts. That's the only reason I'm continuing on and doing the shorter stuff first. Item E, action to approve Agreement 18-105, a delinquent tax payment agreement. Move approval.
Second.
Vicki, did you want to say anything?
This is just a basic agreement. We, they are three years behind, and hopefully by the end of the year they can get this caught up.
Any conversation, comments, questions? We're going to have a roll call vote.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G, action to approve Agreement 18-106, a letter of contract for engineering services for structure inspections less than 20 feet between Brookings County and Banner Associates, Inc. Move approval.
Second.
Anyone want to say anything regarding this? We'll have a roll call vote.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G, action to approve Agreement 18-107, a letter of contract for professional engineering services for structure 06-120-053 between Brookings County and Banner Associates, Inc.
So move.
Second.
Anybody want to comment or ask any questions?
This is the one, uh, the one bridge that Mr. Russell was talking about, um, by Bruce, to get this bridge bid-ready to put through, um, the big grant process in 2020. So this agreement kind of gets us, gets us moving in that direction.
Anything else?
So this will be, it looks like it's around 100, under, just under 140, not to exceed. And so this will be counted towards our matching funds, towards the, to this bridge in 2020 that we're gonna work for.
Yes, yes. Any other comments? We'll have a roll call vote.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
authorizing the exchange of real estate.
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
So move.
Motion carries.
Second.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. All right. Is there anyone that is here to speak to this matter? There being no one, I will close the public hearing. And Stacy, would you like to say something about this?
Um, Deputy State's Attorney Steve Breitzman has been working on this. This is property in the north part of the county on some S-curves at some right-of-way, uh, county highway right-of-way that we had that, um, we will be basically giving, exchanging the real estate over to the Ebers family for their use.
Comments, questions from the commission?
Well, it's a piece of property that had been, been used by the family there that I think a while back we realized it was our property, and they, so we're kind of clearing it up here, and Steve's been working with them on a contract to get that transferred and compensation or whatever and stuff, so it's more cleaning up our, our property.
Any other comments? Ready to vote? We'll do a roll call vote.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E.
Uh, Chair, Madam Chair, would you like to go back to item A so we don't miss that? Or are you...
We've got three minutes, and I thought we're gonna need...
We have eight minutes.
Well, eight minutes. I thought we might need a little more time if we're talking about those contingency amounts. That's the only reason I'm continuing on and doing the shorter stuff first. Item E, action to approve Agreement 18-105, a delinquent tax payment agreement. Move approval.
Second.
Vicki, did you want to say anything?
This is just a basic agreement. We, they are three years behind, and hopefully by the end of the year they can get this caught up.
Any conversation, comments, questions? We're going to have a roll call vote.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then we have a 10 o'clock regularly scheduled item, presentation of a clock to Commissioner Miller?
No.
No, that will be this afternoon.
Oh, this afternoon. Excuse me, I was thinking it was Commissioner Miller. And we were going to do it with Superintendent, Highway Superintendent Burke, but he could not be here today.
I do have a lovely picture though to show you.
Yes, we did, we did present the clock yesterday. I caught it before he left town.
Oh, good job.
See, there it is on your screen.
Excellent.
We felt it was better than mailing it to him, so.
Okay.
We, uh, made a presentation. Brian was there and a couple of other people, so we, we got that accomplished.
And we'll just wait on the other matter and...
Um, we do have a clock for Terry. If, is she going to stop by?
We'll see. If she comes, then we'll address that in a few minutes if that's satisfactory with everyone. Moving on to item number L, action to approve the low bid for institutional food service operations for the Brookings County Detention Center, a high V of Brookings. Move approval.
Second.
Sheriff, would you like to say anything?
Okay, we're going to go back to our public hearing vote.
We got a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. And on this one, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move forward with our 9:50 a.m. public hearing and action to approve Resolution 18-51, a resolution modifying the Brookings County Highway System due to the review of the primary county highway system.
So move.
Second.
Anyone want to say anything? I have concerns about how this is being done. We're not in compliance with the instructions that are on there. And we've got all these items that we're listing that we're deleting from the primary county highway system. And the rule, and I think that might be based on statute, says that for each one of those, we're supposed to have a rationale in there why we're removing that item. And that's not included.
As I look through, most of these were areas where either the city took over the road, or township, or vice versa, is abandoned.
And it just needs to say that in the report. We're missing that piece. If you scoot down a little bit in the directions, and you look at item number two, right here, where we're at, the resolution should state the rationale for the modification. That would be for each modification. And so if it's something because the township took it over, or the city took it over, it should say that so 10 years from now, or 15 years from now, somebody looking at this can figure out why we were doing what we were doing.
Well, I think some of these resolutions have been done. And they should be. I mean, Vicky, they'd have record of the resolutions in the... When, say for instance, South Ponce up there, there was a resolution done back in 2008, '09, when they abandoned that. I mean...
Yeah, we'd have the resolution. I, you know, we can look at, get it, and whatever, but I don't have it with me.
And that should be included on this resolution per SDCL 31-12-2. It should state for each one of those things why we're deleting it from our highway system.
Are we... This is a public hearing, too. Did we open the public hearing?
I did not.
Okay.
And I will open the public hearing. There is no one here to testify, and I'll close the public hearing. Thank you.
I do know this was a boilerplate resolution that the highway received from the state and simply filled in that. So there's obviously some changes that the state needs to make on that resolution because all I think we did was just add in our deletions, additions and deletions to the resolution. So if we redo this, we would need to advertise another public hearing for it and do it probably sometime into January.
And I know from our work on all these little pieces of land that we've been doing for the last year, if we don't have our information in here, some future commission will be looking at this and they're going to try to figure out what we were doing, and they won't know why we did what we did. It just needs to be in the resolution as required by the statute.
And I guess I would agree also. And the fact is that if we're going to take something out of the system and we're going to advertise it, I'm thinking the public's not seeing why or what this reasoning is. They're probably just going to gloss over it. And then, next thing you know, is say, "Well, we took that out of the system." "Well, why and when? And when'd you do that?" "Well, we gave you notice, but you didn't explain it." So I don't know. I would have to agree, the reasoning behind it. And it's probably a simple sentence and probably could be done and stuff. City of Aurora has taken this portion over and they're handling it. That's all we need. And, but if there is something here that it's not that cut and dried, I think there needs to, if somebody wants a chance to come in and say something, they should have that opportunity. It should be a little bit more spelled out of why it's being done.
I mean, some of these, like I said, some of these have been done. And there's resolutions for those.
And we can say that here.
Well, I mean, they can find them, just like your...
You could put pursuant to resolution, whatever the number of it is, and then they can go right to it.
Right.
So, exactly.
And this is not, is this a time-sensitive type of thing here? We could do this in January if we needed to?
I don't believe it is. I think some of these have been done for a number of years. So it's just this resolution cleans up everything. So I don't, I don't believe it, I don't believe it is.
And then, could the additions be added by our highway department for the reasoning? I mean, they could just make that changes, right? I mean, they could talk with them and add that on there and finish that up and do that in January. And again, I guess it's not going to be a lot of research or anything like that. There's probably a pretty good reason, or already a resolution that's done a while back.
Correct me if I'm wrong here, Brian, but the reason for this is your federal aid system. You can only have a certain number of miles on the federal aid system. And they're just clearing it up to delete these. And if we would choose to add a couple of miles to the federal aid system, you'd know the total of your miles.
So do we want to table this, then? And then have it brought back? And I'm just going to tell you all, we didn't sandbag Brian because I did talk to him about this before the meeting, too. But I just think we need that rationale in there so we know exactly what we're doing. And we'll send it back to him. And let's not table it to our, one of our next three meetings. Let's go to like the second meeting in January, third meeting, excuse me, the third meeting in January. Because the first two wouldn't be appropriate.
The 22nd of January, and that would give us time to re-advertise it.
How does that sound to everybody? Would there be somebody that would want to make a motion to table this to January 22nd?
She might want to vote on this.
That's all right, you guys go ahead.
I make a motion to table till January 22nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's table till January 22nd. And then, Brian, if you'd be able to get that back to Stacy, she'll put it in the package. She'll explain all that part to you, so. Okay? Anything further regarding that matter? And...
I'll go to Jay.
We'll move to item number J, action to approve Agreement 18-110, a prisoner housing agreement between Falk County and Brookings County.
Move approval.
Second.
Sheriff, would you like to say anything regarding this matter?
As you recall, last year, I had to take a couple inmates up to Falk County because of keeping them separated and I didn't have room. So I'm just going to keep the contract open in case I ever have to use Falk County again in those situations.
They have a nice new jail, by the way.
They have a new jail, yeah. Everybody's wanting space, but they're getting to be a little far away. When Minnie Haha called me and asked if I had any space when their work release burnt, you know, I think they're taking some to Falk County, but...
Did the rates stay the same, then?
Yeah, 85, yeah. Actually, that's not too bad.
Any other comments? Everybody ready to vote? And we'll have a roll call vote on this.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then we have a 10 o'clock regularly scheduled item, presentation of a clock to Commissioner Miller?
No.
No, that will be this afternoon.
This afternoon. Excuse me, I was thinking it was Commissioner Miller. And we were going to do it with Superintendent, Highway Superintendent Burke, but he could not be here today.
I do have a lovely picture, though, to show you.
Yes, we did, we did present the clock yesterday. I caught it before he left town.
Oh, good job.
See, there it is on your screen.
Excellent.
We felt it was better than mailing it to him. We made a presentation. Brian was there and a couple of other people, so we got that accomplished.
And we'll just wait on the other matter and...
We do have a clock for Terry. Is she going to stop by?
We'll see. If she comes, then we'll address that in a few minutes if that's satisfactory with everyone. Moving on to item number L, action to approve the low bid for institutional food service operations for the Brookings County Detention Center to Hy-Vee of Brookings.
Move approval.
Second.
Sheriff, would you like to say anything?
It went up quite a bit. I'm paying, at the present time, I'm paying $17 a day. And the first year's going up to $20.50 for next year. But talking with Terry, the cost of labor has went up and so forth, so it had to go up. Now, when I budgeted, I budgeted for an increase, but not that much of an increase. But however, I budgeted at 41 inmates. And we averaged 33 this year, so I'm hoping that we'll have another. But I won't know that, you know. But, so I do have, I do have some leeway in my next budget to, hopefully to cover the cost of it. We never usually have any other bidders, you know. And we sometimes hand-deliver to retirement homes and stuff because, you know, they do 24 hours and so forth. This year, we didn't do that. We just went by the advertising. But we did send that to CBM in Sioux Falls, who's always interested in bidding. But again, they don't want to bid until we get a new jail facility and then they'll bid that. They, if they came, they would have to find a place to cook it and then bring it to us. So that's a more cost to them, so. So this is where we're at for now. Hy-Vee does a good job for us.
Are we looking at contract for one year, or you got three-year?
Three years. I'm looking at three years. But I got provision in the contract that if something, if we get a jail built within three years, we can, with notice, can get out of it.
Any other questions or comments?
If we had a new addition to our jail, we would have a kitchen.
Exactly. Do you know, Marty, your total food budget for the year was in your budget? I mean, it's a lot of money that we budget for food at the jail.
I budgeted 41 inmates.
Yeah. All right, let's have a roll call vote.
Jensen?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, we're moving back to item number E, under our scheduled agenda items. And we welcome State's Attorney Terry Nesbitt up to the podium.
Kind of a situation I'm dealing with.
Okay. And are you going to... Terry, on behalf of Brookings County and the Brookings County Commission, I'd like to present you with this clock. And it's beautiful, I have to tell you this. Look at it, isn't this just...
It's like that, yeah.
Anyway, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything that you have done for us. And I'm giving you a hug.
Oh, thank you. I actually had a coupon for a haircut for Dick. I didn't know he was going to be here. So I'll give that to Stacy to give me. Thank you.
Terry, I would just like to thank you for your broad shoulders in carrying that office all those months that you did. Thank you.
Did a good job.
I'd like to say the same thing, as the cooperation between the State's Attorney and my office is crucial. We call Terry at all days and the nights, and she's never, not hung up on me, so. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And naturally, I echo everyone's sentiments.
Item number M, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a legal office assistant in the State's Attorney's Office.
Second.
Michael, did you want to say anything about that?
Yes, very briefly. It can't be understated how important this position is. For those who rely on assistants, you kind of know how that position makes your office work. So hopefully, we can move very quickly on this and so our office transition can move as smooth as possible.
Any questions, comments by the commission? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number N, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for victim-witness assistant in the State's Attorney's Office.
So move. Approval? Second.
Michael, anything you'd like to add on this?
I'll echo the same comments and add just this with, the compliance with Marcy's law is very important to our office. But the victim-witness assistant also helps disseminate important information to help witnesses come forward that help in moving our cases forward.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
Real quick, on the job description on this one, you know, this one has changed a little bit because of Marcy's law. And now, Marcy's law's kind of changed back a little bit here. It's been a little less... Does this job description allow this person to work in other avenues of the office when the time would, or need would occur?
Yes, it would, it would. When we have grand jury and the subject of the grand jury has to do with preparing a witness to testify or answering questions for witnesses that will testify during grand jury, that also fits within that description.
Because originally, this was a part-time, and then it moved to a full-time. And then, but then I see a slash office manager. So I just want this to have some flexibility to be able to work in other portions of the State's Attorney's Office when needed.
Indeed, indeed. Naturally, when something happens to one of the assistants, whether they're sick, or, you know, some injury comes up, or some type of life event occurs, we want to have the victim-witness coordinator be able to fill in on a part-time basis in those roles as well.
You feel this is adequate that way? Yep.
Why does that say office manager? I guess I missed that when I read it. This position, we have a specific office manager position for the State's Attorney's Office, don't we?
Yes, we do. But as I said before, the flexibility within that job description to help kind of fill in when we have a person down is appropriate. And what we've been going through over the last couple of months kind of exemplifies that point.
Was that added into this job description, or was it in the old one?
It was in the old one.
And I wonder if it would not be a better title as opposed to office manager because this position most likely will not be the office manager position to put slash legal assistant as opposed to office manager. I just throw that out. I think what Commissioner Krogman is asking about is, with the changes in Marcy's law, can this person do legal assistant duties in the office as well? We've got that example of duties things, which says, the listed examples include all duties which may be found in positions of this grade. But I don't know that we've kind of made it clear that it's any...
I guess I don't mind having it this way. And the reason is because I do want them to understand that it's just not the victim's... You know, that somebody's applying for this, that this is my only job, this is what I was hired for. And where office manager turns in, it looks like there's administrative duties down there that they can work with, too. So I want somebody that's going to apply for it. And sometimes they just maybe take a look at the thing that have something other than victim-witness and office manager. I understand where you're coming from there, but I don't know if that's, if it's worth changing.
Yeah, I agree with you. I agree with you.
Any other conversation on this? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Item O, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a deputy State's Attorney in the State's Attorney's Office.
Move approval.
Second.
Anything you'd like to add?
No. Since I have not perfected my cloning machine as of yet, I hope that we can move quickly on this matter as well.
Any comments, questions from the commission? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Now, we are going to move back to item number A, action to approve Resolution 18-52, a contingency resolution for fiscal year 2018.
Move approval?
Second. Stacy, could you walk us through this?
So Vicky and I go through each budget line by line. And we've done this actually several times leading up to this document. The first two are in the judicial budget for catastrophic legal and adult defense. We really don't know, these are sort, these bills come in and they're really unknowns throughout the year. So those budgets are both over. So this gets us back, back in the black with those. Veterans, just with the, with the changeover and some things, we're a little bit short on salaries and veterans. Technology, $10,000. You recall there was some discussion back at budget time, some things that we wanted to implement now rather than wait until 2019. So that is, that is that reflection there in that $10,000. HR publishing, we have had so much turnover and so many job postings. So that publishing is really all advertising for the different positions that we've had open throughout the year. Jail, some salaries, again, just with, just some unknowns there. And then...
Quick question, why is there two different lines? Or is it, why are we separating? It's the same contingency line, but why two different?
Did we...
I think we have the wrong line under the $10,000.
Under the $10,000?
I think it's a different, like, insurance or whatever in the salary portion.
Oh, it was in the salary portion?
Yes, it's just, but, yeah.
So do you have that line? Do you know what that line would be, Vicky?
I don't have it with me, sorry. I didn't notice it before now, either.
So that would maybe be an amendment to the resolution? If I can find, if I had that, let me find, I have a budget here, hold on.
Yeah, I think we should amend that before we pass.
So that would be, would we take that out of just the health insurance line, Vicky? The 4150. So everything would be the same except, it would be 4150 and it would say health insurance instead of salaries under that $10,000. So we can amend, if you're okay with that, before we, we will offer an amendment. We'll go through the rest of them, can offer that at the end. And then salaries. E911, we will get into this in kind of our next topic as well. But this, we did have some money, $32,500, if I'm recalling that number correctly, left in that budget. So the $23,000 would help bring that budget to a point where we can pay for our one-third of the cost to get the dispatch center back up and working properly again.
Is that going to be done by the end of the year, though? Is that going to be...
No. It probably will not be done by the end of the year. I don't know if we'll even get billed for it by the end of the year. So what we may be looking at doing in 2019 is a supplemental budget resolution to... So the money will be there and it will roll back, back into the general fund, that amount. And then we can do a supplemental budget hearing in 2019 to move that back into this budget so we can spend it.
Then what's the point of doing the contingency? I'm not quite understanding.
Because we don't have enough in that budget now to cover our one-third of the cost. So this would allow us to put that money into that budget to, to cover our one-third of the cost of the repairs to the dispatch center.
So I just want to be sure that I'm understanding this.
Sure.
So what we're going to do is take the $23,000 out of, out of our contingency line, move it into E911, and then after the first of the year, it's all going to roll over to general fund and, and as will all of the money that's in our contingency fund. So that's why I'm asking. It seems like...
It, yes, but I think it's clearer to show that that money was in there for that expense first, rather than just wait and do a supplemental... Because you can't do a supplemental budget without money that hasn't been budgeted in a previous year. So this is giving us the budget authority. So in 2019, we will be able to do the supplemental budget hearing for the full amount that we need. If we don't do this, we'd only be able to do the supplemental budget for the $32,500. And that won't cover our one-third of the cost. Does that make sense? We have to give ourselves the budget authority to do it first.
I understand that.
Yeah. So it's kind of a backwards way of doing it, but...
And there's no way to assign that money so it doesn't go back into the general fund?
Even if you assign it, it would still be in the fund balance in the general fund, so. And then we would have to unassign it and then do the supplemental budget hearing.
Okay.
So...
So then, but then when we do supplemental budget, are we taking the money out of the E911 or the general fund?
This is general, all general fund dollars.
I'm talking next year.
It'll be out of general fund, fund balance is where we will take it out of. Because all of that money that's left over will roll into that fund balance amount. And the nice thing about this, doing it that way, too, is we can do the supplemental budget for the exact amount. So this gives us enough. And then if we don't have to spend all of it, we can do this, the supplemental resolution, budget resolution for the amount needed. But we have to have the budget authority in this year in order to do it in 2019.
And when we do the supplemental budget next year so that we can actually spend what we need for our share of the dispatch center, does that come out of next year's contingency budget, then?
It will not, no.
All right.
It will not. It'll come out of fund balance.
Okay.
Clear as mud, right? So, moving on, WIC salaries. This has been my error the last couple of years. I've got it fixed for 2019. This person was getting, was authorized to have more hours than what I was realizing when I was budgeting for salaries, so it will be fixed for 2019. Behavioral health, again, just some unknowns there. $5,000 total, some for professional services, am I leanable? East Central, we knew this earlier this year that we were going to give them the full... We had budgeted $55,000, knowing that if they did some things, that we would give them the additional $45,000. So that's approving that. BCOAC has $40,000 total, $10,000 in publishing, which publishing is a little deceiving. It's really the advertising budget for the BCOAC. And then repairs and maintenance, $30,000. There have been a number of things that have needed to be fixed out at that facility this year. Some, you know...
Due to deferred maintenance.
Yes, deferred maintenance costs that we weren't aware of, that we've had to take care of. Moving forward, I don't think we will be seeing that as much. And again, this was a brand-new budget for 2018, too. We don't have that working knowledge or that working history of exactly what expenses are at that facility. So as we work through this and we get a few years under our belt, I think it'll get closer and closer, and you won't be seeing this as much, so.
I would agree.
Planning and zoning, professional services. Vicky, do you recall?
Yeah, it's the building inspections that were up. So that money will come back in, but we still need it in the budget.
Yeah. And then two things for emergency management. I know the one was the sirens. And then, again... And then two things for emergency management, I know the, the one was the sirens, and then again, salaries needed some as well, which was just an error probably in calculations at the beginning on the outset. So the only change I would recommend is back under that jail. The first one here for ten thousand would read four one five zero, and health insurance for ten thousand. The amount doesn't change, the total doesn't change, just the line item being given contingency. The total.
Which line item was that, which one?
This, this one right here.
The ten thousand dollar one?
Yes.
Okay, so I can make a motion to amend to the ten thousand dollar one, that it's line item forty-one fifty for health insurance.
I just have a question for the sheriff. Why are we thirty-five thousand dollars off on salaries? That's a big amount that we're off. Was there something special that happened, or?
I don't calculate salaries.
Okay.
So I can't, I can't speak to that, but I did use deputies out of that for SDSU, you know, for security up there, so I said, after we found out there wasn't a second game in December, I sent a bill right to SDSU, and that's for a little over eleven thousand dollars, so some of that comes out of jail. I'm not gonna say that's the whole, but there is some of that overtime, plus the overtime on transportation. When I send my transport deputy out, like, he goes to Saint Paul, he, last week, he went to Saint Paul to pick up an inmate, you're looking at overtime, because it's four and a half hours to get there and four and a half hours to get back, and that's not counting stopping at the jail, so. We've had a lot of transports, and transports to Yankton with emergency committals. This is all comes out of salaries that is not normally budgeted. So it's, there's, in the jail side, there's just a lot of unknowns. You just don't know how many transports you're gonna have, and those types of things. If that makes sense.
And some of it, we will get money back, but we can't put it in his budget, because we did anticipate in the revenue side that we would be getting some in, even if it is more, we still can't do that.
And I would just comment, I guess, on a lot of these, you know, they can change year-to-year basis, a lot of this stuff. And this isn't uncommon to have, you know, the judicial in here, the jail in here, behavioral health, all of those are dependent on how the year goes, and so, you know, I'm, you know, I don't have a problem with this at all, because this is what we ask our department heads to do, is to do a tight budget, and if something comes up, you know, we'll cover it for you, and that's kind of what we're doing here, and, and we usually budget around six hundred thousand for that, and so.
Yeah.
I, it's working, I guess this is what I'd like, I'd like to see, I have no problem spending the money, I'm not gonna question them and that kind of thing, because that's what we ask them to do.
And if you really take out some of those unknowns, the behavioral health, the judicial piece, that forty-five thousand of that, three, two thirty-six five is to East Central, if you really, if you take out those, we're really just maybe a little over a hundred thousand dollars for our, you know, our regular budgets that we've, that we're giving contingency to. So Vicky and I, as we went through it, we were actually quite thrilled when we got down to the bottom, bottom dollar amount on where we were at for this.
And I think this year, it was a lot less than what we had to do last year.
A couple of years ago, we spent almost all of our contingency, so this is, we're getting closer and closer every year on, on getting this. That being said, after today, now that we've paid some bills today, and we had another payroll under our belt on Friday that was posted through, Vicky and I will sit down again this week, probably tomorrow or Thursday, and look through all of those updated budget amounts as well, because no individual budget can be in the red at year-end, otherwise you'll see Jeff Schaefer in here scolding us at the audit. So we're gonna look at that again, and you may see another contingency resolution on December twenty-seventh, depending on, you know, all of a sudden, something comes up. I mean, for instance, we had the ele, one of the elevators kind of quit giving, they started giving us some grief at the end of last week. Luckily, it was an easy fix, it wasn't too expensive, but things like that happen this time of year, too, some unknowns, so you, you may see another resolution, it'll be much, much shorter if, if we see one at all, but we'll go through it again yet this week and do some more figuring on our end, so. But yes, we were very happy with it.
Just a comment, on, on the sheriff's side, I've worked with Stacy with overtime. You know, it shows that I have a lot of overtime, but it's due to grants. When I get the grants, I tell Stacy that I'm gonna have X amount of overtime, and she's really good about plugging that in. And so that's why I think my, my sheriff's budget looks good, but the jail budget is just so unknown, I don't, I can't, I don't know what kind of overtime I'm gonna always have.
I think this is one of the first years we haven't given the sheriff's budget itself some contingency, they're in really good shape.
Wasn't a criticism, it's just thirty-five thousand for salaries was a lot. And I know that on contingency, the purpose is to pay for those things that we didn't anticipate, but salaries, I'd just like to know what's going on.
And the health insurance piece, that ten thousand, you know, I have to anticipate what people are going to opt for insurance coverage in May for the fall, the next year, and so what could have happened there is some people either joined, opted for different coverages, so there, that could explain that, too. I, I haven't looked at it specifically, but I'm, you know, I'm kind of working almost a, a year and a half out from really with numbers, so it's kind of a best guess in some, some of those situations, so.
So are we ready to vote on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment passes. And then we're going to vote on the main motion, and we'll do a roll call vote on that.
Miller?
Aye.
Krugman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Then moving back to item number P, discussion and possible action on E nine one one, concerns and expenses.
So we had an E nine one one meeting last Tuesday, I believe it was now, can't believe that's almost been a week ago already. And then we found out some additional information yesterday, and as you are aware, Chief Erickson was in here a couple of weeks ago and, and explained what happened at the dispatch center. We met and went over a couple of different options that were presented. One was just repairing the equipment, and then another option was replacing the equipment. The repair was fifty-one thousand, approximately fifty-one thousand two hundred dollars, and the cost to replace that same equipment was just over a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Chief Erickson heard back from the insurance yesterday, and they're only going to cover the cost of the repairs, not the replacement. In the discussion, the E nine one one board had voted to do the complete replacement, because repairing was really, they viewed it as more of a Band-Aid fix to what we really needed to have done to make that dispatch center and get that updated. We were working with twelve, thirteen-year-old equipment the way it was. Just repairing it just didn't seem like it was going to be a long-term solution for, for what we needed. So in, in doing my calculations, the, they'd all, including the one sixty-four, the night of the event, Sioux Falls Two Way had come in, I believe it was Sioux Falls Two Way, came in and did about sixty-five hundred dollars of work, too, that's not included in that one sixty-four. That bill has already been paid by the city, so I'm working with the city on paying our, our one-third. Insurance, we're gonna get back just, just shy of forty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. So if you include that sixty-five hundred in with the one sixty-four, what it boils down to is our, our one-third is about forty-one thousand, give or take, at the end of the day. So that's why we needed that contingency to go in there, it's gonna give us that budget authority. When the city does bill us back for our one-third of the cost, then we will have the money available to do that.
So we do get the fifty-one thousand towards, from the insurance, towards the purchase of new?
It's actually going to, they're going to apply some of that sixty-five hundred, too, so they're sending a check for forty-seven eight is the total insurance.
And that's getting deducted, and then we're doing one-third, right?
Yep.
Yes, yes. So the total cost, the sixty-five plus the one sixty-four is one seventy, one hundred and seventy thousand six hundred, about. You take off what insurance is paying that forty-seven five, and you get down to one twenty-two nine, and then we're a third of that.
I'd like another quick explanation.
And our deductible, the deductible is ten thousand. So you take the sixty-five plus the fifty-one two, gives you fifty-seven seven forty-nine, which is ten thousand off. That is the forty-seven that insurance is paying, so you just have to crunch the numbers, but it, it works out, so it'll be approximately about forty-one thousand will be our one-third of the cost. And I'm working with the city on, on how that will all kind of flow through to us. Basically, right now, they're paying it, and they're gonna, we'll reimburse the city back for, for those costs.
What does this do to our E nine one one budget moving forward, since we're gonna be using some money that we had in there already? Adding that, is there any fund balance in that that we usually carry over?
The E nine one one board decided, there's that thirty thousand dollars that the E nine one one board sets aside for emergencies. They decided, since we're so close to the end of the year, and that we would have to turn around and replenish that January one, to not touch it. So basically, the city and the county are using contingency to, to pay for this. To supplement their E nine one one budgets on both sides and to pay for this.
Another piece of information that was presented to us on the obsolescence of the system was, there was no guarantee if we spent the forty-three thousand to repair the system, that the system would operate. They would, we'd have to spend that money to find out if there were additional damages to the system, and it just wasn't a route we chose to go down. So replacement was, made much more sense, even though it was more expensive, it made a lot more sense.
But I believe it'll get rid of the analog system, go to the digital, correct?
We'll move to digital, yeah.
Yep.
And, and the system, and maybe Stacy said this, the system that we'll be buying will be the same system that Moody County, Davison County, and I think Minor was the third county near us, have the same system already.
Commissioner, can I put a bug in your ears? Is that I resist a little bit of, of my office being the backup system housed in my office, I don't have space for that. It's obvious, until maybe the expansion I could. At this time, I think the backup should be in one of the fire departments, you know, either the East Fire Hall or the new one they got out there. You know, I had mentioned that at the last meeting, and the fire chief didn't seem really excited about that, but he said he had space. So I guess I, I guess at this point, I, when we talk about a backup system, is, is I think it should be at, that way, because the backup system right now is in my main office, and the dispatcher that was at the meeting talked about that if she was there and she had to be there for a length of time, that that would interfere with the operation of my office, and we would kind of interfere with her, since it's not in a separate, quiet area, so. I just, something to throw out at the present time, I just, I, I think one of the fire departments would be better for the backup. Put it in an office out in one of them, and, and when they need, need that, then they, they got it.
How much space is needed for that?
Well, it doesn't have to be a big room, you know, so. In the expansion, I probably would have space, and I could put them in a separate room and keep that equipment there. It's just something, it's just something to throw out.
Well, that's probably something that should be put on your next E nine one one agenda.
Exactly.
Because if we're gonna spend the money to get my place set up, we want to do it right, too, so.
Yeah, and the problem with having the backup at the sheriff's office, from my perspective, is you're what, two blocks from the police department? We had a tornado come through that took out the, the police department. There's likely to be damage at the sheriff's office, just because you're so close, or if we had a chemical spill, or if we had any number of things that we go and do these tabletop exercises that would have a negative impact on the police station, may very well impact the sheriff's office at the same time. And I, I agree that maybe that should go on the E nine one one agenda in January, just to talk about if we couldn't have the backup somewhere further away from the police station.
I can reach out to Chris at the PD and have her add that to the agenda, the January agenda.
Anything further, Stacy?
Don't have anything unless you have some additional questions on that topic.
You're done?
Okay, I am finished.
Anything from the, pardon me?
I'm finished with that.
Anything from the state's attorney's office?
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you.
I do have my report to go through, though.
That's.
I have nothing more on E nine one one.
And we didn't need to take any other action, right?
Correct.
It said possible action, but we don't need to do anything, because we put it on our.
No, I think when it comes to spending the money, the contingency resolution was a piece of that, and then the supplemental budget resolution, when we're ready for that in nineteen, will be action on that, so.
So anything for your report?
So included with my report was the general fund surplus analysis information, Vicky had already touched on that. We're at about forty percent at year, or at forty-six percent, right, at, at the month end in November. And again, Vicky and I will be meeting later this week, we will come up with some different scenarios on assigning dollars to make sure that we're under that forty percent. We're really in very good shape. It looks like we'll be able to assign some dollars to put some, towards some projects, so. We will be bringing that for, forward at the December twenty-seventh meeting. And we'd already kind of discussed the rebroadcast schedule for planning and zoning meetings. I don't know if anyone has any suggestions on what that may look like. To me, and you guys, you can disagree with me, but I think maybe running, and it's just a monthly meeting, but maybe run it following the commission meetings that run twice a week? Just run it sub, you know, following a commission meeting, run the planning and zoning meeting, and that would renew as, as meetings happen, unless, you know, we can discuss that if.
That's what my thought.
I don't know if Richard and Bob had any thoughts on that or not, but.
Oh, I guess that really hasn't been discussed at, at our level yet, so.
I just think to keep it simple.
I mean, we should just try it and see, and we can change it.
And if we get some public comment on the when and how often, we can, we can revisit that at, at that time, so. The next thing is, community health nurse Karen Larson said they, the policy at the state level changed where they would report to the commission the goings-on at the community health nurse office every six months. But Karen wanted me to ask you if, if you would prefer to continue to get quarterly reports from them. If you recall, they submit quarterly reports as part of the department head reports, and they're often here when they can be to give that report. Like I said, the state policy changed for them, they're not required to come here now quarterly, but if you would, they said if you would still like them to do that, they would be willing to, to do that. Any thoughts on that?
I think twice a year would be fine, what do you all think? You wanna go back and tell her twice a year's fine?
Yep, I can do that. And then as Vicky and I were reviewing budgets and the transfers out, the general fund transfers out, this is where we budget transfers to the highway department, and we've done E nine, our, emergency management, excuse me, there's about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. That's budgeted still in the general fund right now for the three oh one, the building fund, we had budgeted in twenty eighteen. I think we were looking at using some of that money to pay for our parking lot here to the south. Demolition costs came in less, and we were just able to pay that out of the regular budget, we don't need this transfer this year. But if you would like to transfer it, we could do a couple of different things, you can, at the December twenty-seventh meeting, you could do a transfer and transfer that money over to the three oh one fund. We will need it next year when we construct the parking lot next door. Otherwise, you could assign it in the general fund for that parking lot and leave it in the general fund, because once you move it over to three oh one, you can't move it back. But I, this is one of those things where we know construction will happen in twenty-nineteen on that parking lot. So looking for some direction on, you know, what action. The action we would take would take place at the meeting on December twenty-seventh.
And the dollar amount is how much?
One seventy-seven zero four three, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, forty-three.
My feelings are, since nobody else is speaking, I'd like to see us put that into our three-oh-one fund. We know we're gonna have to spend it. Let's get it out of our general fund. We aren't gonna have any issue with transferring it back or forth, and then we've got it set aside.
Okay. So Sean provided a staff report on the power outage. As I had mentioned at the last meeting, when we had the power concerns with the dispatch center, it, it did some damage to a transformer box, if I'm saying that correctly. I'm not, not completely knowledgeable on this. But they had to turn off, completely turn off power to this building one evening, two, couple of weeks ago now, to get, to fix that, that box. And Sean provided a staff report. It was attached to my report in your packet, if you've had a chance to read through that. Basically, in a nutshell, everything went, went well. Sean stuck around to watch that process take place, and to make sure that everything came back online when the power came back on. He was also here to monitor our battery backups. Our, our two maintenance workers, Terry and Justin, stuck around too, to make sure the HVAC system kicked back on like it was supposed to. And, and really, everything went really well. Sean said, "We can't really use it as a practice complete power outage," because it was, we were aware of it, we prepared for it. You know, we were shutting, we made sure that employees, staff knew to shut down computers and electronics ahead of time. We wouldn't necessarily know that, we wouldn't have that knowledge of that happening in a real situation. But the UPSs worked. They, they kicked on and kept us going the entire time. It was just a little over an hour that it took them to get that fixed, so. So... No, we did not have the generator kick in. It was all battery backups. So... And then there's, before I get into the parcels of land, just a quick update. Laura Littlecott and I went to a PIO, Public Information Officer Training, down in Spirit Lake, Iowa, last Wednesday. This was just a, a one-day course for public information officers. I play that role. Laura is my backup to that role in, in an emergency operations center situation, in an emergency situation. So it was that kind of training, and it was, it was fantastic. We did a lot of role-playing, where we had to draft a press release. We worked in groups of five, where we came up with a different emergency situation. We wrote the press release, and then we actually got to present it as if it were, we were at a press conference, and the different people in our group played different parts at a press conference. And then the rest of the class got to shoot questions at us. And it was, it was fun, because you, you were taught to anticipate what questions may be asked. And, and some of them got wild, just like you would at a press conference, if you had the public there who were upset. Ours was a bridge collapse, and if you're familiar with Spirit Lake, the Okoboji Arnold's Park area, the bridge going over the, over the inlet between the two lakes, that collapsed. That was our incident. And so we had a lot of people saying, uh-huh, that they were very upset, and couldn't, and couldn't get to where they needed to be. And, and it was a great, it was a really good, it was a really good training. And it made some very interesting contacts, too, down there. One part of our group was the new city, city administrator for, the city of Okoboji was in our group. So it was nice to reach out and meet some different people there. So that was well worth the trip down to Spirit Lake last week. Luckily, the weather cooperated for us, too, to get down there. So last, lastly in my report, before I get to upcoming dates, we had, we showed you this list of property, oh, probably about a year and a half or so ago. And let's see if they... And this was included with my staff report. And Vicky, Vicky has been working on this, too, and taking a look at these parcels that the county owns. And I have just some kind of chicken scratches on my, my list. But there are a number of things that we, I know Vicky had visited with Dick prior to, to him leaving, too, about some of these parcels. And in looking at these, there's a few of them that we feel we could get rid of. So get them off the, get them out of our hands, and get them back out potentially into the tax rolls. This number two is a township line. We could go through the process to vacate that. Number four, I think we needed to do a little bit more research on. It doesn't appear that the highway uses it any longer, but we want to research if there is something there, some use for it. This number six, south of the tracks in Aurora, we would just like to potentially sell that. There is a parcel in, in the city of Bruce that we could deed over to the city of Bruce, potentially. And then number ten, it's on the west edge of Sinai, and we would look into possibly selling that. Kind of the way it looks is the, there's kind of a road that almost goes through this. Parcel extends across a road in some kind of just wetland area on the west edge of Sinai. So I guess looking for some direction from the board. If you would like us, you know, there's, there's going to be a process to do each of these things. So if you wanted us to get started on those, if you want us to do some more research, I have the, the pictures. If you would like any one particular, bring up the beacon photo of any one. If you give me the big red number next to it, I can bring up the beacon photo and explain what we're talking about.
And that was something that both Dick and Jeff Anderson came to my office, and we went through each one of them. And if the highway was still storing salt, or culverts, or anything like that, they have, went through all of these, and they knew where all of them were. So that's where we got most of, you know, if the county still used them. And the one for Bruce, that is in the floodplain. And Jeff said that he thought the city of Bruce would like that property. And being in the floodplain, it isn't going to be worth much. I think that it would be just better to do that, but that is a decision you would have to make.
Thank you. That answered my question, because I was gonna say, well, if we could be getting tax on that, but in light of floodplain, okay.
I think part of the reason this is in front of us, you might remember, was it last year, Larry, that you and Vicky started looking at this list? And you guys, I think, went out and drove around and looked at each of the properties, if, if I remember what you said. And then there was a reach out on that land over in Aurora, and some comments were made about the fact that we maybe are not maintaining that property as how we should. And anything that we're going to keep, and I, I think we need to look at the list and say, yes, we want to follow the recommendation, get rid of it, or we're gonna keep that property. But for those properties that we're not regularly on, you know, I'm not talking about our highway department shops and that sort of thing, who's responsible? I'd like us to have a conversation. Who's responsible for weed control, and mowing, and, and making sure that, that those assets are maintained properly? And that we maybe need to have a policy on that, and assign that out to one of our departments to be regularly keeping an eye on something that belongs to us, for which we have liability.
Well, weed control is always the responsibility of the weed department. As far as mowing, I guess, I don't know. I don't know if highway typically watches that, I think.
And, and I just think we have, we may have some pieces that we don't routinely maintain. And, and we need to just talk about that, make sure for liability purposes, we're doing those things that, that we would expect any other landowner to do. But that's maybe relates to different individual pieces, once we decide what we want to keep and what we want to get rid of. Is there a process you would like to follow in, in doing that? You want to talk about that whole list all at once on a meeting? Would you like to take them one at a time? How, how would you like to proceed?
I think the ones that the highway department's interested in to keep, and just keep them. I mean, they, they work with Misty, and the weeds are sprayed. And if, if they can, when they're mowing by there, they use a tractor mower to mow, to keep the grass down. A couple of the other ones, like the one in Aurora there, I don't know if the city's interested in that. Somebody's been kind of keeping it up. I mean, mowing it, so, but there is some area there that's not, too, but...
Well, I guess I would suggest, if you're looking for a way to do this, is take out the ones that the highway definitely is going to, to hang on to, that we're using. And then address the others one at a time.
Mm-hmm.
So you want to move forward in that way, Stacy? That works?
Yep. And then the only thing I have left are just some upcoming dates. This afternoon is Commissioner Miller's retirement party. That starts at two. We'll do a, a presentation of her clock at, at three, and that'll go until four. And that's going to be here in the chambers. County offices are closed Monday and Tuesday next week, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. On the twenty-seventh, as we've been noting, there's our special commission meeting at, at eight-thirty, just to do some year-end wrap-up items. January first, the holiday, New Year's Day, offices are closed once again. And then we will have that special meeting on January second. We will have a very brief meeting to just reorganize the board. We'll convene, vote, elect a chair and a vice chair. And then we'll do the oaths. Judge Stoltenberg is lined up to come over and do that. And then we'll do photos as well, board photos, department head. Department heads will get headshots, and then we'll do the group photo that morning as well. And then just yesterday, it came in on Monday, January fourteenth. So you have an opportunity to put this on your calendars. The Volga Fire Department county feed is that Monday, January fourteenth, starting at five-thirty, over at the Volga Fire Department. And that's all I have.
Okay, and I think, Michael, you said you didn't have anything. Is that correct?
No, I didn't have anything else.
Thank you. Commissioner Jensen?
On the fifth, I attended the Conservation District meeting. Dr. John Ball from STSU gave a presentation at the meeting. It was very interesting, and it kind of focused on the Emerald Ash border. And from it being found in the city of Sioux Falls, there's a lot of statistics that he brought out. Forty percent of all the trees in Sioux Falls are ash. And it's estimated that there's eighty-seven thousand trees in Sioux Falls that would have to be cut down. And they've moved forward with a program to try to get that completed as soon as possible. Concerns of Dr. Ball was, within five to six years, he figures it will be progressing north towards Brookings. As for the county concerns, we don't have a lot of trees. But it's small towns, the cities. But there is concern of all the shelter belts that are within the county. What he would like to see is, is some push from the state to, to have a fund or a grant, similar to the pine beetle situation out west, where there'd be a grant available, say you had a grove of trees that if you took the trees out and were willing to replant, there'd be a state-funded program for you, basically to help out with this. He's, you know, it's, it's, the city of Brookings, they'll have a lot of trees also. But he says typically a homeowner or something, if you have to have a tree cut out of your yard, it's three to five thousand dollars for a single tree. There is some applications you can do and treat trees to prolong the tree, but essentially, it'd be best if you just get rid of the tree right away. And disposable, disposing of the trees, basically you have to grind the tree up, down to very, about like sawdust to get rid of it. So that was on the fifth. On the tenth, they attended, had dinner out at the highway department honoring Dick's retirement. Good dinner out there, it was a hamburger and brats. On the eleventh, met with Brian and, and Dick, and I met with the city on the parking lot out at the BCOAC, had some discussion there. On the thirteenth, I attended the holiday potluck up here at the city-county building. And on the fourteenth, I showed up for the photo with the ugly sweater. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Ugly sweater?
Yes, Stephanie Miller.
On December sixth, I had a weed board meeting, and we wrapped up the year and discussed the upcoming year, and maybe a change in the type of chemicals that we use. And then that evening, I went to the mayor's holiday party, which was lovely, as it always is. On the tenth, I went to highway for lunch with Dick. And I was really glad that those guys did that, in light of the fact he did not want to party. And we didn't even get to give him his clock here today, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss that guy. On December twelfth, I missed all of the festivities here, because I was in peer for the South Dakota Association of County Commissioner Board of Directors meeting. And we discussed preparation for the upcoming legislature, and things that the county may be interested in, in participating in. And that's always a good time to do networking, because the official board of directors are there also. And then in the evening, we all get together, and the municipal, the municipal league is there. So you get to talk with mayors and city councilors that are present, and that type of thing. So it was interesting, and I'm going to miss that board. I've really, really enjoyed it, and I thank our ten-county group for letting me be, be part of that. And that's all I have. Commissioner Krogman?
Yes, December sixth, the, the mayor's holiday reception, was able to, to make that. And that was a very large showing. There was a packed house there. December eleventh, I was, met here with Leadership Brookings. Commissioner Bartley and I were here, and we talked with them a little bit, and there was a good, get another good group from Leadership Brookings. And then on the thirteenth, we were at the East Brookings annual meeting, and got updates, and Commissioner Pierce gave a county update for us. And we heard updates from a lot of different entities on what's going on. I was not able to make Mr. Burke's burger feed or the county feed there because of work issues, but I apologize for not making those, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartley?
Well, they say December's a busy month for a lot of things, and it was for the county commissioners, too. But on the sixth, I also attended the mayor's holiday party, well-attended, and it's always an invite that I, I like to attend, that party. On the seventh, I think was Innovation Campus's tenth anniversary, if I recall. Was that the fourteenth?
Yep.
Whatever it was, anyway, I was able to attend for a short period of time, get called out. On the eleventh, with Commissioner Krogman, the Leadership Brookings. I think our staff did a great job of, of explaining their positions and the, to the leadership as how the county operates. So it was kind of, kind of fun. It was also kind of a refresher for the rest of us. Then we had the E nine-one meeting also that morning, which we've already covered. On the thirteenth, we had the holiday potluck up here in, whatever you want to call it, the ugly sweater deal. I had my picture taken for that. Okay, and I thank Stacy for bringing me an ugly sweater. Looked like Mr. Rogers' neighborhood, but that was okay. Also, the public affairs of the chamber, it used to be the Government Affairs Committee, it's been changed to Public Affairs Committee, and they work- it's been changed to the public affairs committee and they worked basically on what they were going to be doing for the Brookings Day out in, in peer. And also the East Brookings Business Improvement Association meeting that evening for their reception and left after the reports from Commissioner Mel, or, excuse me, Commissioner Pierce and, and some department heads for the city gave some updates on that. And then on the 17th yesterday, the mental health task force met at noon. We did not have a quorum, but we at least talked about some of the survey results and where we might want to move in the future. And also at 5:30, the East Central Behavioral Health. The largest thing that came out of that meeting last night was a name change to the Brookings, just Brookings Behavioral Health. And anyway, that's a logo change and it, getting rid of the East Central part of it because sometimes it's hard for people to remember to search for East Central Behavioral Health. This will make it more consistent with the new logo, so that, we'll be seeing that come out here after the first of the year. And that would complete my report.
Thank you. On December 4th, I attended the county planning and zoning meeting. On the 7th, went to the Innovation Campus 10-year celebration where Senator Rowland talked and it was a very nice event, lots of conversation about research and, and economic development in Brookings County. Went to the luncheon out at the highway department for Superintendent Burke and again, that was really nice. On December 11th, attended the E-911 special meeting on the dispatch center, which we've talked about already. On the 13th, attended the county potluck, went to the public affairs meeting that Commissioner Bartley talked about. Brookings Day at the legislature will be January 16th, so if anybody's planning on attending that, you should be getting emails on that pretty soon, if you haven't already. On December 13th, went to the East Brookings, Brookings Businesses annual meeting. I was asked to talk for three to five minutes on what Brookings County can do for East Brookings and, and I talked a lot about zoning and what we're doing with our mining subcommittee and, and that sort of thing. It was interesting to listen to the other people's presentations and to listen to the questions that were asked. That, it was, it was a good event. And that would be my report. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session in accordance with SDCL 1-25-2, Subpart 3, Consulting with Legal Counsel, and SDCL 1-25-2, Subpart 1, Personnel.
A move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we will, we will move into executive session then.